I am the United States of America and the people who live for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free to the routine of justice.
Before we approve the agenda there, we have the new business with Josh there moved up right after the consent agenda. And I agree with that statement. Yeah, we want to introduce Deb Belter, the new employee, city staff. And there's Matt, and there's Wayne down in there. So an approval of the agenda? I'll make a motion to approve the agenda of the as amended.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Pose. Okay, on the consent agenda, I would like to probably hold out the payment to Bolton and Mink.
The majority of that bill is Highway 15.
Yeah, but are they going to redo somewhere over here?
On the perp bill. They're starting today.
Did that start today?
But the, out of that 29,000, I think 25 or 6 of it is Highway 15.
Which was all what?
Which was all, yeah, that's all been.
Part 64.
Oh, okay. Approval of the consent agenda. I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll second that motion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And now we'll have Josh there step up to the podium there and state your opinion.
My name is Josh Jennings. I live at Penn State Christopher Court. And I got a call from Jessica from the city. It's happened about a month ago now. And my second water meter was turned on. I don't know how a car turned on, but it used 128,000 gallons. This is two of about $900. And I just hope there's something we can do to relieve some of it, or amortize it out over a year, or anything we can do.
How did, where is your faucet located?
It's on the north side of my house.
But I mean, is it outside? Don't you have it inside?
I did not shut it off. It's circulate.
That's why I don't have it. So don't you be worried about freezing it up if you don't shut it off?
It didn't freeze, but yeah, I would be considerable, I guess. I just recently got divorced this year, so my head isn't quite there. So I just finalized in August, and I have a little sprout, so.
It's usually a big thing to happen, also. Well, what we did in the past is we probably would split that 900 with you.
That would be fantastic.
Because the amount of his second meter is $831, so if you split anything, it would probably just be the $831. Because the 900 is also his normal water usage. So the 128,000 gallons is about $831.
So then we would split that.
Yeah, that would be possible.
And would you be able to pay that right away there?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. You'd take care of that for the city all day? Yeah.
I'll need a motion for that.
Do I hear a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to approve the splitting of the second water meter.
I'll second that. All in favor? Aye. Pose. Motion passes for that.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Josh.
Okay, now open forum. We have one here. Pat Loop.
Good evening, Council Mayor. There's a couple of things I need to go over tonight. One is in regards to volunteering in the community of Montrose. As many of you know, I've volunteered with the Public Works Department since 2014, starting with Roy Henry as the mayor. I took over the compost and started the regulations up there and trying to control what was getting dumped. From there, I moved into assisting public works around town, doing everything from mowing grass to picking up trash in the parks, fixing picnic tables, painting crosswalks, and bribery work. In fact, Wayne wasn't even aware of a lot of the things that I did while working in the city. I carried a commercial driver's license until the year 2015. At that time, I got rid of my CDL, being that I'm 100% disabled and can't get secured to drive commercially like I did for 35 years. It seems like, oh, let me go back here. I also adopted a park in our community, mowed the grass from 7th Street up by Lloyd's House all the way down into the park, all along by the townhomes because they don't cut their grass, just to keep our neighborhood looking good. Mowed the green space up by the trailer park, all to help our community, all to keep the cost down and give our fore employees that work out in the field more time to do the stuff that they needed to get done when the weather was good and when the weather was bad. I run for parts, I'd get a call from Sean or Justin, hey, can you run? We need parts. We're down, we can't plow until we get them. No problem, jump in my personal vehicle, fly and get parts. And my volunteering starts from way back when I lived in Maplewood, and I was a volunteer fireman for a number of years and an EMT. Now, to present day, we had a couple of back-to-back significant snowfalls. I was asked by a member of the Public Works Department at that time if I could help out falling snow off the compost or off the cul-de-sacs, to which I said, I have no problem, getting cleared with the mayor, which they did. I informed the mayor at that time even that there is a statute that you don't need a CDL to drive a commercial vehicle in an emergency situation such as a snowfall. In fact, you can go out there and you can plow the streets, you can sand anybody in this room. So, yeah, I had a heart attack in 2014, January. Blessed to be alive. I put in over $6,500 in this community volunteering. Did I enjoy it? Very much so. Did I enjoy the people I worked with? Wayne, his crew now? Very much so. But it seems that somebody got their feathers all in a ruffle because Pat Loop's out there driving, and he's got health problems. Well, you know what? This city employed a gentleman in this town for a number of years that had a casemaker. And he's running around cutting grass, and God bless him for doing it. So, somebody gets their feathers in a ruffle, goes screaming to Wayne. Wayne doesn't know what to do. He's new into the position. But I just want to let you know that there is a state statute that states that the volunteer fireman or a regular fireman, you don't need a CDL to drive a commercial vehicle. As a farmer, you don't need a commercial driver's license to drive a vehicle. As a volunteer, like I just stated, in a snow emergency, you don't need a CDL to drive a commercial vehicle. And we've gone around and around before, back when Barb was here, after I had my heart attack, about, well, gee, he can't be doing that. Two people at the City Hall saying things together, trying to make it work for them. But they found out that they're wrong. We did have insurance. In this latest episode regarding me driving, we don't have insurance for that. He can't do anything. He can't run a mower, he can't ride a pickup truck, he can't, you know, do this, do that. All the stuff I've been doing since 2014, now all of a sudden we don't have insurance again, where the league of Minnesota City says, yes, you do. But it's all, I think it all comes down to the recent fireball that I've set into place regarding a particular person with their lack of etiquette and concern and confidentiality, and nobody seems to want to do anything about this person. And they just don't want to see that, see somebody doing something good for their, for this community. They don't have a vested interest in this, in the community except for a paycheck. There's been numerous things that I've found out that are going on. Yeah, I requested all the billings from Bolt and Mink because I was out there. I saw what Bolt and Mink was doing. I heard it from the Army Corps of Engineers when I come up and deliver 30, 40 cases of water every couple of days. Yeah, we got screwed big time. And I'm still going through the bills. We've got an issue with PIPA law violations, and I'm just going to say one thing, lawsuit. I started working officially in April of 2014 for the city. My heart attack was in January in 2014. My family was the only ones aware of my heart attack except for the rescue crew that showed up, and all those reports go to City Hall. My wife got a call from Sean Dirks. Heard Pat had a heart attack. Do you think he'd be okay if those guys went down and saw him? I knew the guys at that time. I hadn't worked with them yet. Where'd the information come from? So, look forward to a lawsuit. And I hate to bring a lawsuit against the city I live in, but there's going to be a lawsuit. I've recently found out that there is some stuff going on at City Hall that you people need to be apprised of because I've already talked to the state. And the state said, the recourse, decertify the person from that position they're in, and bring the state in to control the books. I talked briefly with Lloyd about this this afternoon to give him a little information on it. This has been going on for quite some time, for a number of years. It's not an everyday occasion, but it takes an elected official that is chosen to be assigned, and it takes a staff person that is chosen to be assigned for the checks in this town. That isn't the way it's happening. We're getting two staff members signing checks. That's a state violation. That is a severe violation. That is a fine, and the state will come in and take over our books. So, I suggest that council gets together, has a special meeting after they go over to Citizen State Bank and pull some checks, pull all the checks I'd say for at least the last year, see what signatures are on them, and get a little bit ahead of yourselves before the state comes in and say, we know about it. We just found out. This isn't the way we need to run this town. Bills this month alone are a quarter of a million, for last month are a quarter of a million dollars. We upped our ante on the sheriff's department by 60-some thousand dollars. You know, Bolt and Mink got us last year for over $250,000, and they're still giving us. We, you guys allotted $60,000, I believe it was, for all this testing for the new well study. Wouldn't you think that you'd go out and you'd take a boring of where you want to put that well and then go from there? But no, we've already spent $60,000 for Bolt and Mink to find out we can't build out there. We've got arsenic. So I think we're doing things just totally backwards. One last thing regarding the Army Corps of Engineers when they were here. It was a hell of a month in June. Lot of bad weather, lot of wetness. We had a public works director that wouldn't go up to the site unless it just dawned on that maybe he should stop up there and see what's going on. Bolt and Mink, prior to the Army Corps coming in, everything getting lined up and set up and everything else, were told that you don't need to survey. The Army told them, you don't need to survey. You give us the charts, you give us the mapping, we do our own survey. What did Bolt and Mink do? They went in there, built this for how much money? For two surveyors onsite for two days, restated the entire thing before the Army got here. We as taxpayers paid for this. Yet we had a public works director that sat in his office and went, oh, geez, I'm bored. I've lost my department, you know, I don't have anything to do. Yet he was on vacation when the project was going on. Spencer was never around. We talked about this. Our public works guys would go up there and fill the generator every day. Army said, where's Bolt and Mink? Where's this soil pest that we're supposed to have? Nobody oversaw the project. Nobody oversaw the project. And it cost us money. It cost us dearly. And then we had a person on staff that made the comment, well, they're inexperienced, you know, they don't know what they're doing. Not those exact words, but we've been over this before. I sent the complaint to personnel, I sent it to all the council members. It went to personnel. One personnel person took it and ran with it, ran to the city attorney, to the $200 to the city taxpayers once again to find out what we should do. Well, we're not going to do anything because that person has taken on a lot of extra duties and volunteered to do them because Maggie is gone. I think we all work jobs where we do a little bit more when we're asked to and just be fortunate we got a job. Am I right or am I wrong? So, Mayor, this evening, Lloyd, per our discussion, I think action needs to be taken immediately. I think suspension without pay is very much needed at this time. This person has overstepped the bounds way too many times. She has cursed out yourself and Roy Henry in the presence of a resident outside the door of City Hall. Boom. Fuck you guys!
Hey, you can't say that.
Well, I just did. Time people know what's going on in this town instead of having a blind eye to it. It's been going on way too long. So I'm requesting that council take immediate action. If you can't do it this evening, by tomorrow, because if I see that person sitting there in that office tomorrow at 4:00 or 4:30, it's going to take one more phone call. We got built by Mr. Dirks. He sat here and lied to everyone on the council. I'd like to know who his new employer talked to at City Hall for a reference, because that person knew that Mr. Dirks had the job back in January, before January, before Christmas, because he started in January, in February. Yet this council sat here blind and, oh, yeah, we're going to give you your 80 hours, continue to overuse them by the end of March. And he stuck us for it, just like he stuck every city that he ever worked for, from Amarillo to Branson, Missouri, to St. Michael, Minnesota. He stuck us for it, and we were suckered into it. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Pat. There's a few of us that really do appreciate what you do. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay. Next, the Wright County Sheriff's report. I don't see. So we'll move on to the reports, recommendations, and the commissions and stuff. Want to start then?
Yeah, I must have trained the thought which ones I had because I jumped down. It was not at last month's council meeting. Didn't attend Fire Department though, and then a couple other special meetings that we had at City Hall.
Special meetings, union meetings, Montrose Days meeting was closed since yesterday. It was Mother's Day to next Sunday.
This coming Sunday.
Well, this coming Sunday. I don't know. It's the 20th, it's the 20th at 7:00 if you want to come. I was not even going to attend the last month's program meeting either, so that covers it for the month.
I tell you, the council meetings, the special council meetings, planning and zoning, personnel meetings, and negotiations for the contract.
I attended meetings for hiring a new city attorney, a new city maintenance, maintenance, and a new city engineer.
Okay. Fair department.
All I got is the activity report. All I got on there.
Oh, okay.
Unless there's any questions.
Here you go. We did not have a forum at our last meeting, so we had a discussion on just a few things and decided to hold everything over to next month. So with that, due to some recent events, I believe that I no longer have the confidence of some of the governing body nor some of the council members and staff. As you've heard a little bit, Montrose is kind of becoming a place where volunteering is undermined or discouraged sadly, because it's desperately needed, and what applies to one does not apply to others. Government is not supposed to work like that. The residents of the cities and commissions who are left in core positions by the fire and clerk treasurer, we spend months on code enforcement, getting words tightened up, that sort of thing, only to have the person who's supposed to be doing the enforcement be fired up here next day. Park and Wright has got a DNR grant pending with no one to follow up on it. We've been working on legislative funding for the regional park. We have no one to follow up on that. No one with the contacts, steps, or procedures. Although I was kept in the loop of communication and I know who emails went to, I don't know what the next step is. We had started working on Minnesota Twins grant to rehab Carver Field as well. All of this didn't left in limbo because no one had afford that to consider about any of these issues that I raised now. Park and Wright repeatedly has had council members or staff circumvent the commission to do what they want, change things, make deals, etc., without the knowledge or consent of the commission. This happened as recently as our very last meeting. We had a person circumvent the commission, make some decisions, cause some hoopla within the community, all over social media. Commission wasn't even aware that this transaction had taken place. As a result of that, it violated our very own procedures and our very own form that we had regarding park rental, etc. That was not acceptable. Sadly, one or more of these, one or more members of this very council have failed to keep confidential issues confidential, have expressed openly that the city does not need a planning and zoning commission nor a Park and Wright commission, as they can do it all themselves. Well, now you've got your wish, you can. I had really high hopes for the council, as I like and respect each one of you, but sadly, due to broken confidences in some of these items, there's several that have lost my respect. I think what really bothered me is that no commission has had the full backing of all of the council. Residents of the city, some who I thought might be sitting in this room today, as they usually are, but are not, have made false statements and accusations against myself and the Park Commission, and no one stood up to him and told him that he was wrong. I've been accused of being wishy-washy for not choosing sides. Why can't I just have my opinion, be friendly with everyone, and work with everybody? For heaven's sake, Ben and I, when we ran against each other, had some awful battles. I still respect him, I'm still friendly with him, and I can work with him. I find it appalling at times that invoices that come into the city aren't questioned and sometimes are rarely reviewed. Consent agenda is blown through, yet the dates of hearsay conversations I remember without fail. The firing of the clerk treasurer and treatment of the commissions have been based on personal and personality disagreements and not necessarily on what's best for the city. Corrective action evidently now comes in the form of email rather than by a separate form and face-to-face discussion, as is asked is considered best practices in most companies. And yeah, I did go to school for HR, so I'm not just making it up. As I said, there really wasn't a fourth thought, and look, I understand there were legit issues because I had some concerns of my own. Regardless of whether this whole thing was right or wrong, legal, it just wasn't handled properly. There should have been formal reprimands with documented corrective action, probation extension, in my opinion. City offices once again looked shorthanded, and again, all the work dumped on Wendy and on Jessica. City business regarding grants were left in the lurch, as I said. Once again, it makes Montrose look foolish, especially with all of the newspaper coverage. We've really got a long look here now. With that being said, I want to sincerely tell you that I appreciate the opportunity to assert the residents of the city, but I am tendering my resignation as the Sheriff and Park and Wright effective immediately. Thank you.
Okay, planning and zoning, things here. Can you answer that?
The only thing is just the minutes, which Mark Collesses, the city planner, who did the majority of the minutes, where it's got amendments to the chapter fifty-five of the city code, is everything that he took from the meeting. So, I don't know if there's any questions I really can't answer, because I wasn't at the meeting. The only other thing under planning and zoning is resolution number twenty-eighteen-dash-twelve. It's a resolution to allow us to publish just the, to a summary publication in a paper, and it's, we'll publish just the part that was changed, so we don't have to publish the entire ordinance number fifty-five, because it's actually a lengthy ordinance. So, if you approve this resolution tonight, we can publish just the summary or the changes in the paper for this week. Then the ordinance goes into effect once it's published.
Was the whole ordinance published at one time?
Years ago, yes.
Years ago.
Yes. So this would just be, on the bottom, where it says be, be it further resolved, and it's like in quotations, that's where it will be published, which is just the changes to that part of that code.
The Personnel Committee, uh...
You need to do a, so you need, excuse me, I'm sorry, you need to do a motion for the resolution.
Okay. Do I hear a motion for the resolutions? What do you got? Do you have a ready to go?
Uh, this resolution. So it's number, it's number two-hundred-and-eight.
It's what, twenty-eighteen-dash thirteen?
Twenty-eighteen-dash-twelve is the resolution number.
Okay.
So, and planning and zoning has reviewed this and has approved the permission here, perhaps?
This, so the, the part that I studied here for the summary publication is the changes that was made to that ordinance that was at the council, or at the meeting, when they did all the changes of planning and zoning meeting, and it was approved at that meeting. It was all that I bolded or highlighted, so I got it from the attorney and from the city planner.
Okay.
So this is the verbiage that they came up with at that meeting.
And we're sure, because I guess there was some confusion.
Well, I remember, I got it from the attorney, the planner, the chairperson from park, from planning and zoning, and I think Ben, maybe some of the people that made the motions. It's got a cliver to it.
Yeah, that was all approved on both sides, so. So, do I hear a motion for twenty-eighteen-dash-twelve?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-eighteen-dash-twelve.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes four-one.
Four-oh.
What about twenty-eighteen-dash-thirteen? Do we have to do that too?
That was just under the consent agenda.
Yeah.
When you approve the consent agenda.
Okay, okay, that's okay, I'm staying clear. And we'll move down to public works.
Mayor and Council, we have a budget for three summer employees, season open, and we got three applications. I recommend hiring two of them that we had last year. That would be Zach Anderson and Mitch Menthal. And I'd like the council to, okay, to hire them.
So you think two of them will be enough?
Yeah.
Need the third one?
Yeah, because they were here last year, so this will pick up that.
Okay, do I hear a motion to?
What is the pay rate for them?
Twelve dollars.
Twelve dollars.
Is that up from last year?
No.
Since we're not hiring a third person, would it make sense to give them a fifty cent raise?
Well, we're about two dollars over all the rest of the cities already.
I know, but typically, I mean, in usual situations, when you come back to the same employer, you're doing a nominal raise, at least as it's ended.
But they're coming back anyway, so. We didn't need to hoard until. Kind of seems we pay twelve instead of ten, like some cities do, I think. They're happy with it evidently, so I think we should be, so.
At least it did.
I'll make a motion to hire the two workers that we had last year, procedural employees.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
One other thing, Wayne, you and I had a conversation one day about the full-time person. Did that ever materialize?
Yeah. Michelle told me to go ahead and interview him, and I did.
Okay.
Yeah, done that. Lloyd, we had five applications we got in on the operator one.
Right.
And one was qualified out of the five. So on that note, I'd recommend hiring Ryan Nations. He has the license we need, and he'd be available in a couple of weeks.
Okay, a couple of weeks. And then his start wage was what, nineteen?
Nineteen-seventy-five, yeah.
Okay, do I hear a motion to accept? An applicant?
I'll make a motion to hiring operator one for nineteen-seventy-five an hour. He's got a license for store pond and all that stuff.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes four-zero. Right county area of transportation.
I got, I got one more thing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Two trucks.
Yeah, two trucks, we've been, we've been working on for the last two years. We didn't get one last year. City has four pickups, and they're all over ten years old. Some of them are getting pretty tough on the inside and outside. And we're recommending that we, actually, we got a price on two of them. We got a pretty good price. Two thousand eighteen Ford F-150 and two thousand eighteen Ford F-350. We had two of them for fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-six cents. We got three different bids from three different Ford dealers, GM won bid, and finally three bids we got.
These two trucks were in the capital improvement plan, right?
Yeah, they were. Can I get one for that price, too? It's a heck of a price.
Yeah, I got two for that price.
We're going to be replacing the Canyon and the two thousand four F-150 we had.
Now, the Canyon wasn't the one we put a new engine in or anything?
No.
Okay.
That's one that Dan has a little, a little, yeah.
A little rust.
Yeah. Okay. Make a motion to go ahead with those purchases?
Are you making that motion, or should I?
No, you can make it.
I make a motion to move forward with the purchase of the two thousand eighteen Ford F-150 pickup and the two thousand eighteen Ford F-350.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Passes four-zero. You have old business, you don't have none. New business, you care of already. Upcoming meetings, planning and zoning meeting on seven p.m., May sixteenth, Park and Rec, City Hall at five-thirty, June fourth.
I'd like to acknowledge Brew for the dedication that you put in, like, you know, dealing with you is, know that your heart and soul was, and passion was there, and it'll be truly missed. Thank you.
I'd like to acknowledge Dale Powers for the excellent service he gave us. He was good at many things, and what he was good at was the mess repair.
Okay, motion for adjournment? I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Aye.